Good morning. My name is Kevin Reich, Councilmember for Award One, and I'm here joined by my colleagues, Councilmember Glidden and our partners from Excel and CenterPoint. And we're here to celebrate an award and some significant recognition that we received from our National EPA. As a matter of fact, this is the hardware that we gained from the effort. And it's for the innovative partnership category for the city of Minneapolis, the Minneapolis Clean Energy Partnership. And it specifically recognizes that this is the first in the nation city utility collaboration to advance a municipality's goals for energy efficiency, renewable energy, and greenhouse gas emission reductions. And so, we're very familiar with this. It's been really an effort of the community and our partners to forge this sort of activity. We've seen great gains in the activity that we've done so far. We've got this wonderful mechanism where our staff are lined up, our policymakers and decision-makers are lined up, and we have the community who's intimately involved in all the things that we've been moving forward. And so, it's an incredible mechanism to advance things much more efficiently than we would have otherwise to meet our stated goals. And we have strong partners in doing that. But one of the things I noticed in terms of this recognition, I think it's captured a broader imagination around the country. If it can be done here, perhaps it can be done elsewhere. And I think that could be one of the most powerful legacies of us taking this leadership role. Now, of course, we're going to be doing this with our partners and with our initiatives and our mechanisms. Other communities will have to figure out how they bring people together and do it as well. But I think we've done a great leadership example to get things moving nationwide. And I would certainly invite our partners to make some comment on this.
Hi. Excuse me. I'm Bridget Doctor at Excel Energy. And we're just, we're very proud and excited to be a part of the Clean Energy Partnership. It's been a whirlwind and wonderful first year of the partnership, and we look forward to working with the city in the future and helping them reach their climate action goals.
Thank you. And I'm Al Swintek. I'm with CenterPoint Energy. And echoing what Bridget said, this has been a lot of fun. We work with the city, we always have worked with the city on energy conservation and improvement activities. But through the partnership, what's ended up happening is we've been able to meet regularly, in fact, almost weekly. Staff has, I think, developed a deeper relationship than we've ever, ever had. And the leadership, Councilmember Glidden and Reich are on the boards, along with the mayor, and, yes, Cam Gordon, Councilmember Gordon. So, all of us are working together to get this done, and I think we're really making some great progress. So, first year, and we're looking forward to the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Glidden. I'm also a member, along with Kevin Reich and Cam Gordon, on the Clean Energy Partnership from the city's perspective. And I think this award is a good inspiration for us. This is a brand-new, first-in-the-nation-type formal partnership of a city working together with utilities that serve our residents. And we have spent this first year setting up some standards, some data drivers, and now we're on to the, I think, the harder course, which is what kind of policies change are we going to initiate together? So, I think that's what we have to look forward to and the challenge to all of us. So, thank you and congratulations to all on the partnership on the award.
Thank you. And thank you very much.
My name is Barb Johnson, Minneapolis City Council President. And this morning, we have, before we begin our council meeting, we have a resolution to, excuse me. We are declaring April as Autism Awareness Month. And we are joined by my colleagues, Councilmember Abdi Worsami and Councilmember Lisa Bender. And I'm going to let Councilmember Worsami just give a little background about autism awareness, particularly in the Somali community, a unique challenge. So, I'll turn this over to you, and then I'll read the resolution.
Thank you very much, Ms. President. And thank you to also my colleague Lisa Bender. We have with us today members of the Somali Parents Autism Awareness Network. And these are individual parents who have autistic kids and who have struggled with the issue of autism within the East African community. One out of every 32 children born in the state of Minnesota who is Somali has autism or is diagnosed with autism. We probably have, in the whole nation, the highest rates of autism. And it's something that is new to this immigrant population because our parents and grandparents have never known an issue such as this issue of autism. And what we have is, these parents have been working, they've created a network, a support group for themselves, on their own. A lot of them are first-generation immigrants. They have issues with language barrier, but yet they've worked very hard to, one, dispel some of the myths that surrounds autism and then give courage to parents who are struggling with this issue. And the city of Minneapolis, with the mayors, with the help of the mayor, has funded a project to create autism awareness within the Somali community. And this evening, they actually have an annual meeting that we've sponsored, and it will take place in the Center for Changing Lives, which is at 2400 Park Avenue South. And everybody's welcome to participate and come there. And myself and Councilmember Bender will be there this evening, giving some remarks. So, that's why we're going to give them this resolution today. Thank you.
So, I'll read the resolution. It is declaring April as Autism Awareness Month. And it says, "Whereas autism and disorders on the autism spectrum reflect a wide range of disabilities and symptoms affecting more than 1 million Americans, and whereas autism affects individuals from all backgrounds, and whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control and Protection, one out of every 88 children born in the United States has autism or an autism spectrum disorder, and whereas autism manifests itself uniquely in each individual and is characterized by communication difficulties, social interaction problems, and the need for sameness or repetition in behavior, and whereas according to the University of Minnesota study, one out of every 32 Americans of Somali descent born in the Twin Cities has autism, and whereas Somali Parents Autism Network, SPAN, is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit community organization organized to support Somali parents of children with autism, and whereas significant improvement is often possible if an individual with autism receives early diagnosis and treatment, and whereas the Somali Parents Autism Network works to empower Somali parents, families of children with autism in Minnesota via outreach, education, and collaboration for the purpose of connecting them with resources and services, and whereas the city of Minneapolis is currently partnering with Somali Parent Autism Network to inform the community and the general public about autism, stress the importance of early diagnosis and early intervention, and celebrate the unique talents and qualities of individuals with autism. Now therefore be it resolved by the Minneapolis City Council that the Minneapolis City Council does hereby designate the month of April as Autism Awareness Month to better inform the public of the nature of autism, to encourage early treatment and diagnosis, and to celebrate the unique talents and qualities of individuals with autism." So, congratulations, and I'll let you turn that over.
Thank you very much. Alakudiba. Sadie? Say something. Want to say something?
Thank you very much. I cannot express how much happy I am today. We are a parent who are always emotional, and it's hard for us to express a lot of things. I'm just going to make it short. It's been so hard for us, especially the East African.
I think it's hard.
I've been impacted for autism myself. I have two boys with autism, and I have stigma. It took me five years just to come up and say that I have a kid with autism. It's so hard for me. And it's been depressed, sad, I isolated myself, and I'm so happy I'm here today to honor, to get that. It's, I don't know how, I cannot say, I'm speechless, a little bit emotional. So, thank you, Abdi Worsami, and Vice-Council Mayor Betsy Hodge. Thank you.
Thank you. So, their event is at Center for Changing Lives, 2400 Park Avenue South, and it starts at 5:00 p.m., correct?
Yep.
Okay. So, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00, everybody's invited, 5:00 to 10:00, everybody's invited and welcome. Thank you very much.
car accident last week. You know, when you see these things on TV about someone's hurt in a car accident or killed in a car accident, it doesn't get down to the personal level until you have someone that you know taken in that very sudden tragic way. So, I'm going to introduce Councilmember Blong Yang, who has a resolution honoring Kirk Washington Jr.
Thank you, Council President. I was fortunate enough to, you know, get an opportunity to speak at the memorial yesterday. And, you know, I was really short, and I just want a resolution to kind of do the talking for us. And Julie Leerson, who's with the city's coordinators office, our manager of equity and inclusion, is accepting this honorary resolution on behalf of the family, and we'll make sure that this gets to the family. So, I'm going to read the resolution. I will skip all the whereas clauses. Kirk Washington Jr. was a poet, artist, author, teacher, farmer, visionary, and activist in Minneapolis. Kirk Washington Jr. was married to Astrer Nebro and the father of two daughters, Azalia and Kea. Kirk Washington Jr. was a fifth-generation Minnesotan and a longtime resident of North Minneapolis, and whose career was built around speaking the gospel of the North Side. Kirk Washington Jr. told his stories and the stories of the forgotten, the oppressed, and the marginalized with verve. Kirk Washington Jr. left his mark on Minneapolis as a graffiti artist, a spoken-word artist, and a storyteller. Kirk Washington Jr. was one of the 12 poets to contribute to the poem "One Minneapolis: A City in Verse" and performed at the inauguration of Mayor Betsy Hodges, representing the fifth ward and its residents. Kirk Washington Jr. was a creative, city-making artist from intermedia arts, working with Otto Doll and the IT Department to improve digital access for communities of color and low-income communities in Minneapolis. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Minneapolis that Kirk Washington's legacy of service to the residents and communities of Minneapolis be recognized, including especially his commitment to the arts and the residents of the North Side. Julie, we want to say a few words and accept this on behalf of the family.
Thank you. It's a great honor to accept this award or resolution on behalf of the Washington Nebro family. Kirk was a wonderful father and husband and poet, community organizer, freedom fighter, longtime North Sider. So, I also was at his home-going service yesterday, and it was standing room, which is a testament to his legacy. And it ran for three hours, and many powerful, important people in our community came out to speak on his behalf. So, thank you very much. I will make sure the family gets it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmasano.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Conno.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 13 members present.
We are all present this morning. Next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda, and Councilmember Glidden has an amendment.
Thank you. I'm going to move to amend the agenda to include under the Order of New Business a Notice of Intent to introduce an ordinance amending the Minneapolis City Charter. And this would amend Article 8, Section 8.5d of the Minneapolis City Charter relating to officers and other employees classified service.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to amend the agenda to include a new item under the Order of New Business, a Notice of Intent. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next item is the acceptance of the regular meeting.
As a general advisory, I will announce that the rules of the City Council do not allow for public comments at meetings of the full council. Members of the public have the opportunity to comment on city, to comment on city business at the committee level. The purpose of the council meeting is to conduct the business of the city. Consistent with our rules, those who disturb these proceedings and interfere with the ability of the City Council to conduct the city's business will be asked to leave. Those who refuse to follow these instructions will be removed from the chamber. This will serve as a general warning to those who wish to disrupt this meeting. I have advised that interference with the council's ability to do business will be removed. The public may attend and observe these proceedings; however, the law prohibits disruption and interference. Those who do so will be removed. I am going to ask security to remove this person, please.
Ma'am, 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 we are trying to conduct a city council meeting. Please remove this lady. Thank you.
Ma'am, I'm going to ask security to remove you. Thank you. Ma'am, I am asking security to remove you. You're disrupting our council meeting. Please remove this lady. Thank you.
We have, the next item of business is acceptance of minutes of the regular meeting of April 1, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next, we have referral of petitions, communications, and reports to the city officers to proper committees and departments.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. The reports to the standing committees are next, and the first is Committee of the Whole. That committee is chaired by the Council Vice President, Elizabeth Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two items on the agenda for today. The first is prevailing wage requirements for public improvement contracts, ordinance, and amendments to that ordinance. Excuse me. Item number two is a responsible contractor resolution, and I would move on item one. I'll note for my colleagues that there has been a stakeholder question about this, and I am moving to postpone item number one on the council agenda for one cycle, and I will move approval of item number two.
Councilmember Glidden has moved to postpone item one under Committee of the Whole and move item two, responsible contractor resolution. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam President. We have 13 items on our agenda for approval this morning. Item number one is a land sale. Item two are land sales with regard to the Hawthorne Eco Village affordable housing project. Item three is the bond issuance for the Hawthorne Eco Village apartments. Item four and five are rental dwelling license revocations. Item six are the regular liquor, business, and gambling license applications. Item seven is deletion of parcels from the Minneapolis Housing Replacement TIF districts. Item eight is increasing funds to pay for sewer encroachment related to the sale of a city property in the last cycle. Item nine are rental dwelling license operating conditions. Item 10 are changes to our 2016 Consolidated Action Plan. Item 11 is the TIF plan for Hawthorne Eco Village. Item 12 are changes to our home improvement programs with GIMIC, and item 13 are changes to our rehab support program. With that, I'll move items 1 through 13 for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the Community Development Regulatory Services Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Anyone want to pull anything off? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have Health, Environment, and Community Engagement. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing forward two items for approval today. The first came through the Homegrown Minneapolis Food Council and concerns community garden and commercial garden lease contracts to amend the two resolutions related to those by striking the language at no cost to the city. The second item is acceptance of a grant from Medica Research Institute for Needs Assessment. And I will move both items forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. Anyone want to discuss either of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Intergovernmental Relations Report. That committee is chaired by the Council Vice President, Elizabeth Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one item, and this is amendment to the 2016 Policy Positions and Legislative Agenda regarding sewer access charge statements. I'll move approval.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Intergovernmental Relations Report.
Nope. I apologize. Right. I apologize, and I saw that this was referred to the Ways and Means, and I skipped over it. Item number two is a donation of used fire trucks and public life safety equipment to our sister city of Osaso, Somalia.
Anyone want to discuss either of the Intergovernmental Relations items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
Those items are adopted. Next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. And that committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, we have two items for approval. The first item is accepting a grant from the State of Minnesota GI Bill, OJT Apprenticeship Program, in the amount of $29,000 to cover veteran hires at $1,000 per hire plus $1,000 for veterans who have 12 consecutive months of employment. The second item is a contract with Hennepin County Sheriff's Office, Metro Transit, and Minnesota State Patrol for the 2016 Safety Initiative, or the Jet Patrol Teams for the summer in 2016 here. And with that, I will move for approval of both items.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Anyone want to speak on either of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have Health, Environment, and Community Engagement. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing forward two items for approval today. The first came through the Homegrown Minneapolis Food Council and concerns community garden and commercial garden lease contracts to amend the two resolutions related to those by striking the language at no cost to the city. The second item is acceptance of a grant from Medica Research Institute for Needs Assessment. And I will move both items forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. Anyone want to discuss either of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Intergovernmental Relations Report. That committee is chaired by the Council Vice President, Elizabeth Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one item, and this is amendment to the 2016 Policy Positions and Legislative Agenda regarding sewer access charge statements. I'll move approval.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Intergovernmental Relations Report.
Nope. I apologize. Right. I apologize, and I saw that this was referred to the Ways and Means, and I skipped over it. Item number two is a donation of used fire trucks and public life safety equipment to our sister city of Osaso, Somalia.
Anyone want to discuss either of the Intergovernmental Relations items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson. Item 11 is the bid for the Sixth Avenue North Street Reconstruction Project, and that's accepting a low-responsive bid of Max Steiner Incorporated for the amount listed. It's noted that that's a historic renovation project, so very unique. Item 12 is a bid for construction of Americans with Disabilities Act, intersection ramps, and that's accepting a little bit of Tidetrack concrete in the amount of just a little under $1.5 million to furnish labor materials for that work. Item 13 is the bid for turf establishment, and that's the accepting of a low bid, the amount listed. Item 14 is the bid for large diameter sorum steward cleaning, and that's accepting the low bids as listed. Item 15 is the bid for gray-black Class A aggregate, and that's accepting the lead, a single bid for that work, and we did check that to make it, make sure it's consistent with other pricing. And item 16, the last item, is the bid for the Niklet Mall Reconstruction Planting. That's accepting the low bid to do that work with the group listed and the amount listed. Madam President, I'll move all items, and I'll move item seven as presented by staff in the committee hearing.
Councilmember Wright has moved the entire Transportation and Public Works Report. Any discussion on any of those items? And number seven is the recommendation by staff as presented at the committee. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to move a substitute motion for item number seven, which I have passed out. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Substitute that Councilmember Bender has in front of us, motion number one by Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. So my motion is to approve the original layout for Third Avenue South, which would be three-lane options for the southern portion, which is south of 8th Street, that has three vehicular travel lanes, one in each direction with a center turn lane, center-planted medians, and a planter-protected bike lane in both directions.
Councilmember Bender has a motion in front of us. Any discussion? Did you wish to speak to that now, or you want to wait?
I'm happy to wait for.
Pardon me?
I'm happy to wait for where I'm at.
Okay. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. I will be voting in favor of this amendment and for the three-lane option on the southern portion of Third Avenue from 7th to 12th, and I want to give a little bit of history as to why. First, I use Third on a daily basis. In fact, there's a good chance that I use it about as much as anybody else in the entire city not withstand, other than maybe the guys that ride their bikes for Jimmy John's. And I use it maybe four to five times per day, and right now, especially on the northern portion that I use, I can tell you from firsthand experience that it's incredibly dangerous. There are times when you're riding in the gutter, there are times when the side of your handlebars are literally hitting the rear view or the side-view mirrors as cars, as cars, as you pass by, and there have been at least a few occasions on which I almost got in an accident myself. So the protected bike lanes on Third are absolutely critical to the transportation future and the north-south connections for our city. Now, let me explain the history. These protected bike lanes are something that I've been pushing hard for, for at least a year and a half now, and certainly my entire time on the council. And while, I will say, and so we were pushing for these, but as you know, the north-south connection of Third Avenue includes two different wards, one of which is with my good friend, Lisa Goodman, in the 7th. And initially, Councilmember Goodman was not on board with a protected bike lane, but she progressed and she evolved. And it's my, I believe that being a progressive is not simply having a mentality when you're born, never shifting or changing. Being a true progressive is someone who questions their belief, someone who evolves, and someone who shifts to account for different mentalities at the time, and Councilmember Goodman has most definitely done that, and there's no doubt in my mind that we would not be getting a protected bike lane today without her. There's absolutely no doubt in my mind. So the history of this particular project went as such. We wanted the protected bike lanes. We asked staff to figure out how that could perhaps happen. They initially came forward to us, the council members, with a four-lane option through the entirety of Third, including the southern section. Now, fifteen or sixteen years ago, Councilmember Goodman was once again progressive in deciding that we needed to have medians there, to green up the atmosphere, to improve the traffic flow, and to beautify downtown. So she pushed for and got the medians. She enabled the businesses to pay for them, so it cost the city minimal money, and it was a substantial improvement at that time on Third. So she asked public works staff, is there the potential that we can keep those medians on any portion of Third? Staff came back and said absolutely not on the north section. However, on the southern section, there is the potential to keep those medians if we reduce the lane structure from four to three, one lane in each direction with a turning lane. Following that suggestion, the business community that we can't just push aside, they are a very important facet of our city, said that narrowing it from four to three just simply didn't work, and Councilmember Goodman decided to take the hit, to sacrifice the medians that she had fought for fifteen years ago, and allow the four-lane option to progress. So there are two choices that then become before us. There's the three-lane option with the medians, and then there's the four-lane option without. The three-lane option, of course, has the planter-protected bike lanes, whereas the four-lane option has the ballards. And so I did not take this decision lightly, as I have to consider both residential commuters as well as some of these, from some of the businesses. So first, for about a week and a half, I spent ninety percent of the rush hours out on Third Avenue from 7th to 12th, just viewing what was happening. And I will say there were days where there was heavy traffic. There were also substantial days where there was practically a trickle. There was nothing, especially when you look at the blocks from 9th through 12th. The amount of traffic that was on those lanes was minimal and in some cases nonexistent, and that was the heaviest portion of flow during the entire day. I then went back and reviewed the numbers. I did some math myself, and while there is a substantial difference between the status quo and either of the two proposals, there was minimal difference in terms of seconds and LOS timing between the four and the three lane. In fact, we're talking just about a number of seconds. So from the blocks from 7th to 12th, the number of times, the amount of time that it takes, took you to get through an intersection with the three-lane versus the four-lane was almost nothing. And so then I'm just taking, then I need to decipher which one of these two options is ultimately better for the city, improves greening, has an improved aesthetic. And speaking only for myself, the ballards, in many cases, don't quite cut the mustard in terms of a visual. The planter protection is significantly better. It adds greening, and I think the long-term vision for downtown is improved with that additional greening. Now, I will say, while I am supporting this three-lane option, we are getting a protected bike lane here, which was undoubtedly the original goal, and that is something that regardless of the outcome here, we should celebrate.
Thank you, Madam President. So this is one of these decisions that has a lot of technical detail, and I'm somebody who likes to kind of get in the weeds of those details, so you may have to indulge me talking about traffic studies. But I think that the overall message here with this proposal is that the one that we began with, the compromise that had four lanes in the northern section and three lanes in the southern section, is better for everyone. It protects the planter medians that Councilmember Goodman and the downtown business community put in to improve that street years ago. It results in a much better planter-protected bike lane instead of one that has plastic ballards, which no one likes. It creates a better pedestrian experience, and it's a safer road for literally everyone, including drivers. And there is study after study after study that shows that three-lane streets are safer for everyone, including drivers. The Federal Highway Administration is an organization that promotes three-lane roads as a safety measure for all users. I think this is also a project that really illustrates kind of the synergy that we have seen in our city as all of us partners are working together to make our city really great. And you don't have to look farther than the downtown council's plan, the 2025 plan, to see the statements, the policy statements that would lead to a plan like the three-lane version. The downtown council's plan has a goal to create a consistently compelling downtown experience, to deliver a consistently excellent pedestrian experience that inspires people to explore downtown block after block, no matter the season or time of day, 24/7/365, to lead the nation in transportation options, to maintain and improve high capacity for commuters on our streets, increase transit mode share for daytime commuters from forty percent to sixty percent, and to create and sustain green infrastructure that showcase the riverfront. But to establish and intensify the tree canopy threat downtown, create green corridors that connect downtown districts to close-in neighborhoods like those in the 10th Ward. This project is just a few blocks from my ward, and hundreds of people commute on this roadway, if not thousands, from Whittier and Uptown and the neighborhoods farther south. It's my daily commute. I bicycle every day, year-round, on Third Avenue, sometimes with my two small children. And as Councilmember Frye said, it's a very challenging road today. It's pretty terrifying in some spots. And the great thing about the three-lane version is that, again, it's a win-win for literally everyone. Third Avenue does back up at 5th Street. There's a choke point. And another great thing about this project is that, no matter what happens with the lane configurations in the south, this project also will upgrade the signal time at 5th Street to improve traffic for drivers, so that will help that choke point and relieve congestion in the entire corridor. If you look at our own traffic study, the three and four-lane configurations are basically equal. Both of them result in an essentially free-flowing traffic condition downtown, even during the busiest times of day, even in the highest peaks of congestion. So if we decide today to tear out the median and put in a worse bicycle facility with less greening, we're really doing so for no real supported reason, other than the concern of some folks that are worried about change. And that's a, I mean, that's a legitimate thing. We see that every time we make a change in our streets. And I wish we had done a better job as a city of creating a process that build more consensus around this. I think if we had had that, if we had had people sitting at the same table, the folks from the Bicycle Advisory Committee who've taken position after position after position in support of three lanes, the people at the Pedestrian Advisory Committee that took multiple resolutions in support of three lanes, the folks from the Downtown Council's Greening Committee that reviewed the three-lane version, and were very concerned about the removal of the planted median, along with the folks who are more representative of the six property owners who have sent us a letter. Because, again, there aren't institutions that have taken an official position against the three-lane version in the southern portion. There are property owners who are concerned. And so, again, I think that really this is a, would be a huge missed opportunity for our city to go in and tear out something that is great. It's part of what's making downtown great. It would miss an opportunity to make this corridor more beautiful than it is today, and it would be something that literally has no downsides for drivers. So I would encourage all of my colleagues to support my motion in order to make this corridor in downtown as great as possible for everyone.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, and I am going to support this substitute motion for a number of reasons, many of which I spoke of at the committee, I think, quite eloquently and made my case. Unfortunately, I wasn't willing, or wasn't able, I was willing, but wasn't able to win the majority there. But I feel like having the three-lane makes a lot of sense in a lot of ways, and it's borne out by some of the data. And I shared a little bit of my story with the four-lane to three-lane conversions in the second ward at the committee, and I just want to share a little of it now. In fact, the first time I remember it happening in my neck of the woods was Franklin Avenue when I was involved in my neighborhood group, and I didn't quite understand why so many people wanted to move away from the four lanes to the two lanes on Franklin Avenue. But the city was willing to do it and try it with the county on board, and we were able to do that. And most of it is two lanes, so most of it went from four to two. There's very few left-turn lanes, and there's a lot of traffic there, and it seems to work just fine. Since I've been on the council, I've also been through a redesign of Riverside Avenue and seen it work there, and also Cedar Avenue, where it's quite significant. So when I heard that we were thinking about it on Third, I thought, well, of course, that's going to be a lot harder. Third, that's right downtown. There's got to be a lot more traffic on Third downtown than there is on Franklin or Riverside or Cedar in my neck of the woods. So I looked at some of the numbers, and I realized that I was wrong in that assumption, that actually what we have for our traffic counts on Third Avenue, the cars per day is about 9,687 on Third and 7th. And it's important to notice that in some parts of Third, there's a lot fewer cars than on other parts of Third, and that's why the original design came back with differences. Now, on Riverside Avenue at 23rd, where we made this conversion from four to three, there's 13,112 cars a day, significantly more cars. We've made the conversion, and the traffic is actually, seems to be moving better and flowing more smoothly than it was in the past. Franklin and 23rd has 13,885 cars a day. Again, that's a lot more than we see at Third and 7th, and it's working well even at rush hours. Cedar Avenue has 13,000, this is at 5th, which is down to two lanes from where it had been four, is 13,401 cars per day. Again, significantly more than we see downtown at Third and 7th, and it works much better. I'll also note that the density in these areas is very high, much like it is downtown. At 5th and Cedar, if you're not familiar with that area, it's just a couple blocks away from Augsburg College, a couple blocks away from the University of Minnesota, and right down below what may be the highest-density block in the city with the Riverside Plaza housing there. So there's a lot of people and a lot of cars leaving all those destinations and getting to 35W and 94. So there's a lot of use there and a lot of density, and it works well. But I also remember that it was very challenging and difficult for everybody to get comfortable with this idea when we were making those changes, and I can appreciate that. And I think that's part of what we're hearing right now and we're experiencing right now. But it has worked in those areas, and it will work, and the people that were worried about it and anxious about it prior to it happening, we don't hear that anymore. And I think if we're willing to make this change now and have what we're talking about, much better greening, much better protected bikeways, it's going to be a significant improvement. Also, I'll note that it's also an improvement for the pedestrian realm, and this is one of the reasons why we did it on Cedar especially, was to widen the sidewalks and make it safer and make the crossings safer, and we were able to accomplish that. One of the things that I've noticed, because I'll confess, I drive a lot to work, and I drive down Third, and I a lot of times drive on four-lane roads. And when it's congested and there's a lot of traffic on the four-lane roads, this interesting thing happens to the middle lanes that frustrates me so much at rush hour, because you think you're going to get going through and you're moving smoothly and you're in that lane, and all of a sudden, somebody up ahead of you is making a left turn. And then there's all these cars in that lane that's trying to get to the right lane so they can get around the left turn lane. And actually, that's why I believe that when you look at some of these intersections and some of the numbers, it looks better. In fact, some of the data that we've seen in some of the reports, the traffic actually moves more smoothly when you have a dedicated left turn lane, because everybody who's going left knows to get over in the left, and then everybody can get through on the right lane. Actually, I think there was more data on traffic than we were aware of even at the committee level. I was able to find some things on, online, seemed like some traffic studies and reports were released to the media before they came to the council, and there was one report out recently that was actually looking at the intersections and how the seconds of difference, and it's minimal between the Third and Four in terms of how long it takes you to get through those intersections. And Councilmember Frye was alluding to this, too. One of the earlier studies I saw actually showed some intersections, the traffic went through more quickly when there were three lanes than there were four, and I think it's precisely because of this problem with the straight and left-turn lanes being the same lanes. So I actually think in the end, if we went to this conversion with these dedicated left-turn lanes, we're going to have the drivers downtown a lot happier with the way it works, and it's a lot clearer to everybody. And if there's a second or two-second delay, either way, I'm not sure how it will turn out, because it seems like we have some conflicting data, but it's no more than two seconds, and so I think that it's certainly not something that should make us be worried about making this change.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. So through this process, there have been arguments that I have bought into, and there are arguments that, quite frankly, haven't worked. In reference to Councilmember Gordon's argument regarding Franklin and Lyndale and Cedar, that argument is not one that's worked, nor have I bought into it, because if you talk to staff, there's a dramatic difference between a corridor that does not have lights on every single street, where you can drive six, seven, eight blocks and not have to stop a single time because there aren't stoplights, and downtown grid that literally has traffic lights at every single corner. So that argument is not one that I've bought into, because it just doesn't make sense. There is a different dynamic when you are downtown. However, if you're going to listen to staff, I do think that you have to listen to staff on a consistent basis. And what staff has said very clearly is that it would not work on the northern end, however, it would work on the southern end. There are statistics that are there that very clearly show there being almost no difference between the three-lane and the four-lane. So what I think we need to be doing here, and hopefully we do this the next time around when inevitably the same discussion is going to be taking place with Hennepin, is we all have to be, I think, very frank and honest about what we're talking about. So you look at the numbers, you look at the statistics, you listen to staff. Certainly, you can make arguments based on the values propositions, whether it's to commuters or to businesses, but, you know, I think we, we can't just be...